Okay, thank you. Ken, will you give me a test, just give me your name on the audio?
Test, test, test.
Okay, thank you.
This is Ken.
It should, because we're not using that second laptop tonight. Bob's indicated that he doesn't have all the technology in here to do it the right way through Zoom, so we still are dealing with the same Zoom that we've had. And he's hoping by the next meeting he'll have some other technology here that we can pipe through Zoom and all the other stuff as well.
Have you got the mics on?
Oh, we're on.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, February 8th, 2021 Caribou City Council meeting. And for those that are listening out there, we do have our new, our new sound system in place. And we hope that solves a big problem, much needed problem, solution. Rule call, item number one, Mark gone, counselor gone, is asked to be excused. Is there any problem with any counselors with that, Air?
Nope.
Boma? Morale?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
No, here, okay, so that's, counselor gone is excused. The invocation, an inspirational thought, via Zoom, we have Cynthia Salerno. Cynthia is the Relief Society President for the Caribou Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I believe I got that correct?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself as well, if anything else you'd like to add, and proceed with the invocation, thank you.
Evening, thank you for allowing me to join you. Could you bow our heads in prayer, please? Our dear heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. We thank thee for all of thy many blessings. The opportunity to live in an area that is so beautiful. To enjoy the freedoms that we have. To enjoy abundance and opportunity. We ask that thy Spirit might attend this meeting. That it might touch each of our hearts with a spirit of cooperation and a goal towards serving our fellow man. We say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Slide number three, item number four, public forum. Danielle?
There is a comment.
Perfect. Makes that easy.
Mayor Smith, there was, Mr. Shane McDougall had talked with me about wanting to express some feelings about the airport, and he is available via Zoom tonight if the council would entertain his thoughts, or if you're interested in that.
Is he available, Shane, for public input?
Yeah, I am.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so I basically just wanted to, I've got Danny Debray too here with the midday. He's off. Also a hangar owner, or a hangar rent mail, a couple of weeks ago that our rent was going up, which we didn't, you know, didn't really have any issue with it, but then on the, on the second part of the note, it said that we were going to be assessed $50 extra a month for anything else that was in the hangar. And so, you know, I got that and I had to think about that a little bit, I just kind of questioned. I called Dennis and talked to him quite a bit about that, and just was questioning the reasoning that the, when the airport committee, and I'm not sure if the council, I know the council's only the agenda for the council to look at, but I don't know if the council's made any decisions on that or not, but just a few things with that. You know, in the, in the Federal Register and under the aeronautical standard, well, first let me step back. When, when those hangars first started renting out, the metal one, there are three different sizes in that hangar, and they all, they range from 100 and, I believe 165 to 185 dollars a month. And there are three different sizes, and that's just the way the orientation of the building is. That set of T-hangers was designed based on a Cessna 185, and that type of aircraft, that size of aircraft. And so, you know, I just ended up getting the hangar I did, it's a little bit bigger than, it's the second biggest, largest hangar. And, you know, I saw my airplane in there, I think the other guys saw their airplane in there. I saw other things in there as well, thinking, well, jeez, if they're going to charge me more to save them, clearly they think that, you know, that's okay. So then, I didn't think anything of it until I got this letter. You know, I was okay with like the $10 a month increase, that didn't really bother me much at all. You know, that's just cost of doing business and there's stuff there. I think there was some other things that Dennis and I talked about. There was some indication that, you know, people were trying to heat their hangars, which I thought was kind of foolish, because those hangars aren't insulated for one. Secondly, we, we both have, both Danny and I, I'm sure some of the other guys do have, you know, heaters that we preheat our aircraft with, or something you'd put on your desk and, you know, heat your feet with. We turn that on for a half hour, 45 minutes during the cold months to get our aircraft up to temperature before we, we go ahead and pull them out and start them. But I can't imagine someone is trying to heat their entire hangar, if that is the case, that shouldn't be allowed, but anyway, so there's just some other things there that just, it just, I don't know, it just, when I got that, I just felt like, you know, we were just being dinged for something, to be honest, and, you know, I just, I wanted to, you know, hear what the reasoning was behind that decision and, you know, where that goes. The other issue I take with that is, you know, I did, I've got all this stuff in there, and I won't, I won't, you know, mix me over, I just, it's the middle of winter here. For me to move that stuff now and find a, find a home for it is pretty, pretty slim to none. And, you know, I've just got stuff in there that I'd like undercover, and, you know, if you need to remove it now, I'm going to have to set it outside. So, I mean, just at the end of the day, I've got those two questions, one is just questioning the reasoning behind that. And two, you know, if that's something that you guys are really going to take action on and continue with, I guess I respectfully ask that, you know, that, that gets held off till, you know, May or June, when I can deal with my situation in my air, in my hangar.
Yeah, we have this on the agenda for discussion under Old Business.
8B.
8B. So, we'll address those questions then.
Mayor, could we ask Shane and Mr. Dupree to kind of hang around, that way we can caucus with them as well about the airport hangars under 8B, Old Business?
Would you be willing to do that, Shane?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Shane, the question was whether you and I would be willing to hang around for that discussion later on in the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any, anyone else? Minutes? 5A. For the January 4th organization meeting.
Motion, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Air, seconded by Boma, any discussion? Air?
Aye.
Boma?
Aye.
Morale?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 5B, January 25th, council meeting minutes.
Two more.
Second.
Moved by Air, seconded by Terryo, any discussion? Air?
Aye.
Boma?
Aye.
Morale?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, secure that. Number 6A. Bid openings, awards, and appointments. Sue's scheduled as a certified municipal clerk by International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Dennis?
May I defer to our city clerk, if that's okay, and have her share some of that information with you?
Can you get a microphone over there?
In this, in the memo that you have in your packet, it outlines that there's quite a process that the clerks can go through with the International Municipal Clerks Association. And our deputy clerk, Sue, she's been involved with clerking for quite some time now. Previously with the Mapleton Chapel Hill community, and now with us. And has spent a lot of time in training and, and service. And was able to receive this special recognition, and we just wanted to highlight her achievement and recognize that as a city employee, her efforts, and grateful that we have her on staff and what she adds to our clerk office. Is that okay, Danielle?
Is she, is she with us on Zoom or anything?
She's not tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, Sue, for your work.
Good job.
Later on, get a, someday we could get a photo, maybe tomorrow or something, we have another meeting in the afternoon. Okay. Reports by officials and staff to manage this report. Dennis, as always, he's going to highlight these, and if anyone has questions on any of these, don't hesitate to bring them up.
So, just again, it's in your packet, there's a couple of items, just as we go through the agenda tonight, we'll hit on a lot of these. From an economic development standpoint, we've, we've been hearing a little more interest in businesses coming to town or expressing interest in looking at some places to locate. Christina Buchanan Gibson, of course, she's been working closely with the business community and also the landlords, making sure that we've identified future places and trying to coordinate on where businesses could go. Some of those, the 60Xs highway building that we used to own, it's still in renovation stage. We're still waiting for the, the current owner to bring the actual permit to us, as far as what their intentions are there. But the indication is it would be some type of commercial recreation facility, so we're excited about that. We had an inquiry this week for a pet grooming business that would be moving into the area. And so, another, again, thing that we're, we're looking at and trying to facilitate a place for. The, some of the big items that we have that are outstanding, the power plant businesses down, or buildings down on the river, those properties are currently out to bid, at the minimum bid set by the council of $75,000. I've talked with a couple of different parties that had expressed interest previously. There's still concern about the, the potential environmental asbestos cleanup inside the building, and hoping that the city might be able to help identify some state or federal funds in that process. The discussions that we've had with DEP and, and the federal government is that they're still trying to, as long as Merlin One is still considered an existing business, there's very little that they can do. And so, again, I've engaged with the Merlin One representatives, trying to get an idea for what their processes are looking like, as far as declaring the, the business a longer solvent, and what's happening with that. And haven't been able to, haven't heard back from them yet, as far as their response to that. But certainly looking at those things, the oligarch and power that owns the hydro facility there at the dam, they've indicated now that they are looking at the option of selling the dam. And if they cannot get the, if they cannot get a willing buyer for the dam, they may be considering decommissioning the, the structure altogether. And that, that could mean the removal of the dam from Aristic River. And there are, there are several concerns that the state wildlife department has with that. I know that there's concern even from the farmers, as far as that water supply, and being able to have that potentially as a pumping source in dry seasons. And so, I have talked with the state and tried to talk about with different agencies, what their interests might be. And even if the hydro element is gone, would the state be willing to pick that up and maintain it as a facility from an environmental and a wildlife standpoint, and, and from the agricultural standpoint of the business, or the facility there? The bird's eye cleanup, we have been contacted by a midsize retailer that's interested in the property. They're, they've expressed some interest in, in locating there and looking at some different concept designs for, for the site. Of course, we have a lot of concrete still on the property. And so, trying to work through how much of that, if any of it's going to have to be cleaned out as well, and would that be taken into consideration, where we own the property. And so, we cleaned up a portion of the property with grants from the Northern Border Region Commission. We have to retain that property for another 18 years, as far as the ownership. But we can enter into lease agreements, improvement agreements, and so, we haven't got to that point yet with this, with this individual. We're still just looking at how much ground are they going to need, what's the footprint of their building, and how might we be able to locate it on the property? The Gerald Storage on Limestone Street is moving forward, they've submitted final site plans for that work. And we're reviewing that now. At the same time, we have, the same owner is working with CEGC to acquire a piece At the same time, we have, the same owner is working with CEGC to acquire a piece of property over by the park and ride lot, which is right next to the snowmobile trailhead there. And they're looking to acquire another almost two and a half acre property and again, build some storage sheds for ATV snowmobiles and use that as a jumping off point for the trail system. So, we hope to see that transaction finished in the next couple of months and possibly have something under construction later this year depending on their timeframe. But that's, as representatives on CEGC board, bringing that to let you know that that's something that they're working on right now. The Business Investment Group and CEGC are both interested in working to develop some of the city's tax-acquired properties and other properties that the city owns. And so, I met with legal counsel last week and we started to look at some options, not necessarily of the city creating a city land bank, but maybe building into our policies the ability to use existing nonprofits in a way that they can be the land banks. And so, we're working through some language on that. From events and marketing, we are, Christina was instrumental in working with Presque Isle and putting together an application for some joint grant funding that would look at the region and some potential economic planning funds to look at job growth and bringing in some major business training and development, employee training and development options for the area. That's kind of a highlight on the economic side. From the administrative side of things, they, of course, will have the discussion on the 2021 budget tonight. Union negotiations are ongoing. We've met with the Sargent's Union. We could talk about that later tonight. And the Public Works Union. We're still waiting for a date for the Police Officers Union. And on February 23rd, we'll have our first meeting with the Fire Union. The tax-acquired property policy, the, where we're at in the process for last year's tax-acquired My face is getting all, I don't know if you call it sweaty, but we, with the properties that we tax-acquired last year, we've, we had to give them until the end of January to reclaim their properties. There was a state law amendment a couple of years ago that also means that we have to provide them an option, if they want to use it, for us to sell their properties through a realtor. And if we, if they want to go that route, we have to hire a realtor, let them sell a property, we get our money out of the process and then they get the difference. And so, it's a state statute. They have until the end of February to let us know if they want to exercise that right or not. And so, you'll see the latest or the newest bid list for tax-acquired properties that won't come to you until March. But we're doing what we have to under the state statute to make sure we're, everybody's rights are being followed with that. The structural work of the fire station is, it's at a point now where the workers have left, they've completed the welding work and they've installed the new fault ceiling. When spring thaw occurs, they'll be able to get up, they'll do the roof membrane and they'll also finish the painting work at the same time on that. Teak Park, the splash pad, just waiting for the thaw to start on that. The City Hall boiler system, we've talked with Ed River, they'll perform some additional repairs on the current boilers. That should get them both operating in tandem. And we'll be advertising to have all the valves and thermostats in this building revamped so that that should improve our overall efficiencies in the building. We did find out that there is, there is money through Efficiency Maine, what we could get $5,000 toward a new boiler system. Ironically, the, not to go into it, but there is an option to maybe get some funding from Efficiency Maine and we can talk some more about that with the building committee another time. COVID-19 status, we're continuing to administer vaccines through Chief Susie and also Cary Medical Center is administering some of those vaccines. We do anticipate that if there's a large supply of vaccinations that come in or made available through Cary, that the recreation center would be turned into a vaccination clinic and may for a time be inaccessible to the public other than for the vaccinations. I don't know if you have any questions on anything else that's, that's on the manager's report? Those are kind of the major items I wanted to highlight tonight.
Any councilors have any questions for Dennis on the managers' report?
The cable franchise review. When are we going to start working on that?
At this point, we can bring it back for a council work session, get everybody up to speed on where we're at here. And it's just a matter of engaging them again to, to get the process moving forward. They were, last year in 2020, even in 2019, there was a lot of legislation happening at the state level that was going to force cable companies to provide certain services beyond what they typically done. And some of that is still embroiled in the courts, not sure how it's all playing out. And so, some of this, we are waiting to see if the state was going to prevail. And if they did, it would give us more ability to put those into our, some of those changes into our franchise agreement. But yeah, we need to bring it back and make sure everybody's up to speed and the terms that we had in there and even the history of where we're at now with the whole franchise agreement.
We'll get that hopefully on the next agenda or next one or two on the road. Any other questions on the managers' report? Thank you, Dennis. Old Business, 8A, resolution 2021, allowing employees to retain prior year non-used vacation time. Briefly, we discussed this at the last meeting, it was brought up under the managers' report.
As you said, Mayor, we briefly discussed it at the last city council meeting. This resolution has been drafted, trying to make it clear that this is a, this is a one-time thing, but it is a recognition of the circumstances that we find ourselves in and a way of showing appreciation to the staff for their services over the last year and their limited ability to utilize that benefit. This would allow employees to carry over up to 40 hours of unspent 2020 vacation hours beyond our typical March 1 expiration date. The carry option, carryover option is a one-time benefit due to the pandemic. And any vacation carried over from 2020 will expire December 31st, 2021. So, it's not like they can continue to carry this over and over each year. And then all other city vacation policies would still remain in effect as far as their use and needing to get permissions for time off and so forth.
Counsel, any wishes?
I'll move that we accept the vacation time to the banking of 40 hours vacation time for this previous year.
Second the motion?
Removed, Terryo, seconded by Willie, to accept resolution 2021. Discussion? Or Doug?
What's in place? Do they understand that it's use it or lose it?
Currently.
Yes. Does anybody watch to see? Do you watch to see how your employees, that they're getting this needed time during the year to go home and regenerate? Whether they, whether, and I understand I fell in the same category, I couldn't go anywhere. A lot of my employees were the same way, but they had to take their vacation. They needed that time last year to rejuvenate, come back with a clean thought. So, my first question is, are you just leaving it up to them to take their vacation when they want to within that year? And if so, how did we get beyond and how many got beyond the year that now we're talking about going into 2021? How many people are we talking? How many employees are we talking?
Not every employee has 40 hours of carryover as far as the managing, we don't mandate any employee use their time. The current personnel policy is a use it or lose it by March 1st. The concern has been that people haven't been able to use their vacation. And at the same time, there are some employees that, yeah, I've had to encourage them, hey, you need to get out of here.
And I appreciate the effort from them too. I'm not trying to slap anybody's hand, but, and I'm one, not one to talk because I do the same thing myself and I don't take them when I'm supposed to and I should to rejuvenate. And I just think that we need to have, make sure they get their vacation within the year that they're in, not just say, well, listen, if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. I mean, I appreciate the dedicate, dedicated thought process they have, but they need a vacation and it's in the books, it's on the books, it's all covered. It's up to us to make sure they get it and that they take it. And I'm not a fan of rolling stuff over for the next year. We get into pinches on earned time and all this other malarkey that, anyway, that's kind of my thought. I mean, anyway.
It's certainly a balance between the budget element of if they take it, some departments, there's an automatic backfill that needs to take place in order to maintain shifts. And then you end up with the person that's taking the vacation getting paid their dollar per hour and the person that's coming in getting their dollar and a half per hour. So, for some departments, if you, if they take the vacation, you're really paying two and a half times what the one person would have been paying just by him staying and not going on vacation. But definitely there's a balance between, you want them to, to take their vacation, you want them to, as you say, be rejuvenated, to come back with a fresh mind on it. And it's kind of a balance.
It's kind of pay me now or pay me later. Yes, I understand what you're trying to explain, but it's pay me now or pay me later. It's going to happen now or it's going to happen later. Anyway, that's it for me. Thanks.
Any other discussion on this? Lou?
I think it's important to remember that this is a one-time deal. It's not something that's going to extend beyond this year. And essentially, it's for people who couldn't take their vacations last year because of COVID and not having the ability to take a week off here or three days off there. So, they've accumulated this. And so, rather than lose it March 1st, like Dennis said, we're showing our appreciation by saying thank you for being there when we needed you and you have until December and we'll pay it out. Not necessarily you're going to take it, but we'll pay it out so you don't lose it. And like he said, there aren't really that many. I mean, it's not like every employee in the city of Cary was going to use this, so.
Just to clarify, Counselor Willie, you mentioned the word paying it out. At this point, this does not anticipate that someone's going to get paid out for this vacation time. They're, they're expected to use this.
To use it? Okay. I misunderstood then. I thought it was a payout if they didn't use it.
No. If they, they can carry it over, they can have an extra week, so to speak, of vacation in '21, but they're not going to get paid out for it if they...
So, there isn't the benefit of the backfill? I mean, we're still going to backfill these people? Or have to backfill them?
For some of them, it may be that way.
Right. Depending on what department they work in.
Right. But yeah, this, this is not intended that somebody can roll over 40 hours from 2020 come December 31st. If they haven't used that time, they'd get paid out another week. They would lose it if they, if they haven't used it in 2021.
Doug, could you provide me a list of how many and the hours that we're talking, please? Okay. Excuse me.
Any other discussion? Air.
Aye.
Boma.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terryo.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. 8B, discussion regarding airport hangars. Get Shane and, what was the other gentleman's name?
Andy Dupree.
Okay, thank you. You get those gentlemen back up to be part of, or listening on this and potentially be part of the discussion. Page 12, so I'll let Dennis start on this. Go to you after that.
So, councilors, I know that we recently, in December, the council adopted some amended rates for the hangars. The new hangars, the base rate went up for the smaller hangars, went up $5. For a midsize hangar, it went up $10 and another one went up by $15 a month. There's been concern that are we, if people that are utilizing those hangars are able to use them to store lots of other things in them other than just airplanes, are we then competing with the private market in the city? Are the rates that we're charging, are they fair market rates? That, in looking at this information, I did provide a chart in the, in the staff report that shows you where we're at in relationship to the market rates for cold storage. And you'll see that, I pulled this up on the screen, but the cold storage units generally are less than 500 square feet in area. And when you look at, this was a basic internet search for cold storage in the, in the region and pulling off the rates that they were publishing on their websites. And so, the information that came back was we have one cold storage facility that for 25 square feet, they charge $1.20 a square foot. And so, it's roughly, roughly $50 a month for that, for that small space. From there, it goes up. You have a standard of around, you can see from the matrix above, 25 square feet, 30 or 50 square feet, 100, 150, 200, 250. These are pretty standard size units. And you can see across the board, these competing companies stay fairly close to each other as far as what those rates are. With the smallest units, as I said, $1.20 per square foot, slightly up to 82 cents per square foot for a 50 square foot building and then 61. They, the higher you go, generally that lower price per square foot that they charge. There's a, obviously in any market, there's a balancing effect, right? If you start charging too much, people aren't going to go and rent the space. And apparently the market, at least for these sizes of units, kind of balances out with these numbers. And so, when you look at what we're charging at the hangars, our price per square foot is closer to 15, 17 cents a square foot, but we're also leasing these units that are 1,300, 1,700 square feet. And if you were to, to do a trend graph on these numbers, the blue points are the current cold storage. And it's an exponential trend that you can see our hangar prices are slightly below the trend. I was able to get, the airport of Belfast has one hangar that they rent. It's 1,100 square feet and they charge $250 a month. That number actually plots right on this trend. And the, some of the questions of the fair market value comparison is why as a airport are we concerned about the hangars in that they are two different types of clientele? With the airport hangars, we're dealing with FAA funds. The intentions of the FAA are that these hangars are built with their funds. It's in a sense subsidize or grant money to help spur interest in the airports and what's happening there. The FAA has even gone to the point now under the Federal Code of Regulations where they've indicated so long as... where they've indicated so long as somebody can put an airplane in the hangar, move it in and out or have access to it, even if they're building an airplane in the hangars, the FAA doesn't care that there's anything else in the hangars. Granted, that's the FAA. And you as a city council, you can decide as well, this is our policy for our hangars and how we want to treat them. And so coming back to, the FAA also says if the hangar is going to be utilized for non-aviation-related purposes, such as somebody decides they want to live in the hangar or somebody wants to run a business out of the hangar, they don't have an airplane in there, it's strictly non-aviation-related, then the FAA says we have to charge a fair market value rate. And that's really circling back to why we're looking at the fair market value rates is, are we charging an appropriate rate? And again, a discussion with the council of do we want to follow the FAA side of things and say as long as the airplanes can be in there, we're not going to worry about it. We'll get our hangar rent money out of it. Or take the more stricter stance of we, it's only for aviation purposes and if you put anything else in there, then we're going to charge you a fair market value rate. So I think that's the background for some of this discussion. And I think what the two gentlemen on Zoom would like to express some thoughts on or at least take part in your discussion tonight. I don't know if the council has any questions for me or allow our Zoom participants to share. It's up to you, Mayor.
Does anybody have any discussion? We had an airport committee meeting the other day. I don't know. Anybody want to weigh in on that or?
Dennis, it says in your manager's report that you conducted an inspection of all hangars February 8th, compliance with aviation-related equipment standard. What did you find when you went up there and checked everything?
Hey Dennis, I can't hear anything.
Yeah, I'll repeat for you so you can hear it. So the question was what did I find as we went and did hangar inspections today? And both Dave Willett and I went up and we got into the hangars. There was a couple of the really old hangars, padlocks on them, so we'll have to get with those individuals another time. And one of the hangars, we weren't able to get into, it was iced over, something with the door. But the other five of the new hangars that we looked at, there was one hangar. And thankfully, the tenant was there when we walked in. We were able to have a discussion with them. There's one hangar where they have the airplane, but they also have an old fire engine that they purchased from the Portage Lake region, three snowmobiles, an old vehicle that needs to be restored, parts to a plane that they intend to put together, a lot of flammable containers that were relying around, which is not consistent with our lease agreements. And so that one tenant, he was there, we spoke with him. And his comment was basically, well, it will be what it will be as far as, you know, he'll abide by whatever the council direction is. And we explained their concerns about what he had in there and the competition with the local market and so on. There's another hangar that we found, it included some four-wheelers. And one did not have a plane in it currently. It just had a boat and some motorcycles in it. So clearly that one currently is not being utilized for aviation purposes. The other hangars that we went into, there was basically the planes there and some incidental things that you could say, yes, those are probably related to the pilot doing some mechanic work on their own planes. But pretty minimal, especially compared to the other one that we saw. So that's generally what we found today.
So I think the big thing here is that, and Shane really can't hear us, I wish he could.
He can't hear. Can you hear Shane?
No.
Can you hear me?
Well, we can't even hear him because the internet's so lousy around this place.
Can you move closer? I don't know.
Your internet connection is unstable. I think the big thing here, and you can reiterate this to Shane, is that we don't want to take away from local businesses that have storage units. Now, I know that Danny's got, I've heard Danny has, you know, a little tractor he pulls his airplane out with. That's fine, stuff like that. But when you see a fire truck in there, I mean, that's a little ridiculous. And...
What's ridiculous about that?
A fire truck?
Yeah.
Shane, what was that?
I said, what is ridiculous about that?
A fire truck in an airport hangar? What's ridiculous about a fire truck in an airport hangar? I could think of many things. It's not for aviation use. When are we going to use a fire truck from Portage Lake that somebody owns?
Probably doesn't work.
You know? It's pretty, it's pretty simple in my eyes. You know, if you want to store a fire truck, get cold storage somewheres else. But if you want to have tools, if you want to have heaters to heat the engines, if you want to have any other thing that's aviation-related up there, I have no problem with. My big thing is I do not want to take away from local businesses who have cold storage or heated storage. That's all I'm saying. And fire truck is a little bit too much as far as I'm concerned.
Doesn't the contract say that it's for aviation purposes? That they, when they rent a hangar, doesn't it say for aviation purposes?
The contracts didn't have this provision in it that required it aviation only. It's silent on that.
Yeah. Because if you've got a 1,300 to 1,700 square foot hangar that's got a boat in it and other things and no plane or anything, this is pretty inexpensive cold storage compared to what you, you know, what you have to pay for cold storage. So, you know, I think that the contracts maybe have to define what's going in here too.
I did, after sending out the staff memo in the packet, I did reach out to the other airport managers in the state and I asked them some basic questions. Do you charge based on the size of the hangar? Do you have power meters in each hangar? What's your general price per square foot? And some of those airports came back and said, yes, they do have individual meters in those units so that they can charge the tenants directly for power usage. Some of them don't, just like ours. Some of them said that their hangar rate was 45 cents per square foot. And I think that's kind of leaning toward what you're saying is if they're not going to use it for an airplane, then we need to be charging close to what the fair market value is for, as far as per square foot.
Well, and for one other thing too, the fair market value, this is, I know like these other ones, there are PacRat and StowIt and things like that, this is cold storage. There's no electricity in these buildings, I don't think. Whereas there's electricity in these hangars. So that's something else as well, that when you pay for cold storage, that's what you're getting is cold storage. And if you're getting electricity in here, yeah, it may not be, you know, conducive to trying to use a little space heater to heat it up. But if somebody else is paying the bill, could be something that they may do as well, so.
Doug?
I was just going to say this should be revamped a little bit here and looked at.
Doug?
Well, for me, I'll go on the record as this is a prime reason the municipality should not be in the rental business. We have no business being in it. But it's done and I guess there's not much going to be done about it now. I don't care if somebody's got an old plane up there, parts and pieces, it's aviation-related, I have no problem. Fire trucks, lawn mowers, old cars, antique furniture, we're not in the business of that. We shouldn't be in the business of what we're already up to our cheeks in already. We have businesses who pay a lot of taxes and are in the business of storage. That's where that stuff belongs, not in the municipal storage. It's for airplanes or aviation-related. Anything other than that, if I had my way, I would plainly say get it out. End of the story. It doesn't belong there. I'm not a fan of even being in the business. Shane, you want to buy those hangars or?
I got a couple of comments if I may.
Go ahead Shane, you're next.
Go ahead Shane.
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree, we shouldn't be competing with other businesses in the area as far as rentals. But has anybody tried to find a rental space lately? There's zero rental space out there. There's no competition. Even the one out here is headed towards Woodland is fault. You know, and I know I just moved, I filled one up, it was the last one. The other thing is the FAA rules clearly state that what we're doing is fine. I've got those, I'm pretty familiar with them. I know the FAA compliance officer very well. But I think the biggest thing for me is just, you know, what was the genesis of, I guess, this? What started this task? That's what I'm interested in.
Shane, I think I can answer that one. It's, we recognize that it was time for the fees to be reconsidered for the hangars. And looking at the costs and seeing the power usage go up on the building more than we anticipated and looking at what's causing all of it and recognizing that some of those hangars were being utilized beyond what was originally anticipated would be going in up there. And some of the direction that we had under the earlier FAA regulations was that we could potentially be at risk of our grant money if... And again, this was under previous FAA discussions and now that they've changed it, that's not so much a concern. But still, the thought being if we need to establish what a fair market rate is and overutilization, so to speak, of that, then what needs to be the rate?
Fair enough.
You have something else?
Yeah, I just picked a point that, you know, you can go down, you know, for the past, I don't know how many years, there's always been a component of the city that just does not like that airport. This just seems to be another add to that. It's disappointing, I can go to Prescott Isle, I can be a tenant and I can get 10% off every gallon of gas I use, aviation fuel. They're a pro-airport. You know, in the five or six years that I've been doing this, it's just been a struggle almost every corner you turn. And it's disappointing because, you know, that's not bringing people in, making them feel wanted to want to stay. But we'll do whatever the council wishes. I would ask respectfully that if you do adopt this and you want to put it in, that you wait till, you know, we can have a more reasonable time to move stuff out. Thank you for the time.
Doug, did you?
No, I'll let it stay right there.
Stay right there. So my question is, we set these rates in December.
Back in December, when the rates were set?
The way it is now, here's just my opinion, you know what I mean? I'm not worried. The $50 one way or the other. I just don't think we should be utilizing that, those hangars for non-aviation issues or non-aviation things. That's... I know we're doing what the FAA says we can charge at $50, but...
Who did you charge $50 extra to? Which hangars?
At this point, we haven't issued anything.
So we have.
Because we have to give them 60 days' notice of any fee increases. And that went out in January, so they still have the timeframe to clean that up, so to speak. In talking with the other airports, they did point out that if a tenant is violating the terms of the lease, then typically there's not a penalty fee that the other airports are charging or simply sending them a notice to say you're non-compliant, you need to get compliant or vacate the space. And so that's maybe something else to consider is rather than having this fair market fee, we just reiterate, create the new policies. Of course, again, we're dealing with tenants with existing leases and happen to work within those leases. If we want to amend those, then there are processes that we have to go through. And as you say, Doug, it's a process that from a city standpoint, we're not the best at being landlords, but we still have to abide by those rules.
The problem is you're putting a Band-Aid over where it should be. I mean, I know Shane and Danny are good tenants. And it's the problem of one bad apple ruins the batch, you know? And that's why we had to do this. We're basically saying, you know, if you go in and you tell somebody, look, you need to come compliant, then what happens when that person moves out and a new tenant comes back in? And then we start the same process all over again. This is a one-size-fits-all and it's $50 above and beyond what it is if you're not compliant. You know, and if we start compliance, see, let's say June 1st, this is when you need to be compliant by and this is when this is going to stand. That gives everybody ample time. We get through the winter and gives everybody ample time. And I'd be very cautious on what you, like a garden tractor. Well, a garden tractor can be used to pull out planes, to bring back planes. You know, if they, if people can just demonstrate that it's aviation-related, okay, it's aviation-related. I'm not, I don't want to go up there and police that. You don't want to. You know, there's no reason for us to. But when you've got a hangar with no airplane in it, being used for cold storage, with zero airplane in it, it feels like we're being taken advantage of, you know? And I don't agree with that. And be that as it may, that there's no rental space anywhere else. But, you know, we just can't, we're just not in that business up there.
We get, now we're going to tie up some resource for somebody to police this. Who's going to, on a hobbyist airport, we're going to, the taxpayers are going to pay to send somebody eventually. He's got to go up and see what's going on. Am I correct or?
Right.
So now we're adding more, more into a, throwing money down a black hole. I just, I know we can't change what is, they're there. But if he's got a plane in it or they have a plane in it, fair enough. Aviation, if you're going to store everything else, it's not. Got to draw the line somewhere. And it's got to be that now we're going to have to spend resources at some point to police and double-check that they're not having a garage sale up there. Anyway.
Any other questions from council or discussion, Courtney?
I would just like to see what the lease or the rental agreement looks like. If I could get a copy of that.
Get it all to us because this is basically a kind of a discussion area. Like you said, the prices went up, we just haven't gone with the $50 yet because of the 60-day contract. Okay. Is there, do they have any more questions? Discussion?
Shane, anything else you want to add?
They're froze. No, they're froze.
They're good.
Okay, they're good. Okay, so that, we'll get a look at those contracts here in the future and see where we're going with this. Okay. AC, discussion regarding 2021 budget review.
Hope I didn't break somebody's eardrums by accidentally... So, I hope I didn't break some of these eardrums by accidentally touching that mic. We're at the point now, we're at the budget, I presented some numbers to you a couple of weeks back, and you've had a chance to review some of the lines themselves. We are continuing to look at those numbers, trying to find savings where we can. And I wanted to have some discussion about where we're at right now in that process, with you as a council, and get your general feedback as far as the direction goes. Because we do need to get this budget adopted by March 15th. So, basically gives us a month before that first meeting in March, in which to act on it. Or, again, we do have a special meeting tentatively set, excuse me, for March 15th if we need it. But there's three general directions I wanted to have this discussion with the council on tonight. First off, under general operating expenses, we're currently sitting in the drafted budget at just a little under $9.3 million, or roughly $45,000 less than the 2020 budget. And so, when I'm talking about operating expenses, I don't include the capital, I'm not including the enterprise funds such as economics, housing, snow trail maintenance, FSS program. Those funds, they receive dollars that are to cover their costs, and so we treat them as enterprise funds. But everything else, excluding, excluding again, capital, we consider operating. And so, right now, from an operating standpoint, we're showing that we are $45,000 less in this budget than we were last year. From a capital standpoint, this is where it gets a little more interesting. The draft capital expenses that we have for 2021, if you look at just the expense side of that, we're at over $1.7 million of capital. We also, as we've looked at the funding sources for all of those projects, it's been indicated that we want to tap into certain reserve accounts. And that's why we build up reserve accounts, is so that we can pay for some of these things. And so, out of that $1.7 million, we're currently showing, using $853,772 from reserves. And that's the total, so you take that 1.7, and you subtract out the reserve money that we're going to use, that means that we are identifying the need for $871,000 of essentially new capital dollars in the budget. Or $320,000 more than we had in the budget last year. When you look at the general categories of those capital expenses, almost 250,000 of that is debt service. Where we have the fire engine, this is the last year for the fire engine, the pellet boilers. We also have several accounts that currently have negative balances on the books. And so, part of this capital plan is not necessarily filling in all of those deficits, but trying to start putting some money into those deficits. The, when we look at facility repairs, such as the fire station work, and City Hall, some work that needs to be done here, at the library, the rec center, we're looking at $444,000 of new capital, identified $270,000 of current reserves to offset those costs. When looking at future major facility expenses, so the biggest one there being that we've set right now $150,000 of money toward future road projects. We've got Bennett Drive, the north end of Bennett Drive that needs to be repaired, South Main Street, Sweden Street, there's places on there that, these are state highway roads, but they've told us that we have to maintain them. Typically, we build up reserve accounts so that we can match their dollars, so that our dollars are stretched on those roads. And so, that's the biggest, from that $288,000, $150,000 is towards new facilities, or new roads. Other projects, we've got $331,000 going toward new facilities, primarily Teague Park, with $328,000 coming from reserves for that. As far as equipment replacement, there's $386,000 in there for equipment replacement, a police cruiser, a mower, dump truck, the equipment in this room, the chamber AV system. And there's been identified $236,000 of reserves to offset those costs. There's $18,800 in there for new body cams for officers and vehicles, but using, ran roughly $18,000 to offset those costs. As far as future capital reserves, $232,000 for future capital. Looking at fleet replacements, the airport apron work that needs to be done in '23, streetlights. And so, you can see, each thing that we have, we've identified these numbers for these projects for. And we have a significant amount of reserves that we're using. One of the issues that I'm seeing is that, even though we have the reserves that we can put to these projects, that is a significant drain on reserves. And within this capital budget for '21, we have identified roughly $300,000 of new reserve funds. So, we spent $853,000 of current reserves, but we're putting back in $300,000 of reserves toward future facility maintenance or major projects. At the end of the year, what you would see then, on the city's financials, is a difference in our city position, financial position, or a reduction of over $550,000 because we've spent that out of reserves and only put so much back. But again, that's why we have reserves, so that we can try to put, try to cover some of these costs. I just, I wanted to highlight these elements for the council, and see if you've got questions or thoughts on that, as far as the direction that we're currently looking at in the budget.
Council, questions on the, on the discussion for this budget? Doug?
As one of seven, I have no intentions on passing a budget that's going to raise taxes to the citizens. And I'm only one of seven. We need to get our house in order, and if it means we have to do what we have to do. Putting another burden on them is throwing money down a black hole, in my opinion. The easy part is spending it, the easy part is raising taxes. The hard part is, is when you get a majority that says, we're not going to do that. The hard part is, how are we going to stop it? How are we going to fund all the things that we need to fund? I'm just one of seven, but that's where I stand today.
So, my question, Mr. Moreau, is how are we going to fund all the things we need to fund? Because what I hear is, people are tired of potholes and losing tires in the road. They're tired of not having things that other communities around us have. This budget, I believe, is thoughtful. It's trying to catch up on some of the things we've let relax. So unless you have a really interesting way of finding a way to fund this, I don't see any other way than to maybe put a mill back in so we can cover this. Because we need to keep our city current. We can't get new people in if our city's falling apart. And I'm not saying we need to raise it a mill, I'm just throwing that out there.
I'm not going to make any raise. And how you vote is your opinion. And I've been around this long enough to know that every year there's a crisis. Every year we need to do this, or we need to do that, to grow the community, and widen our roads, and, you know, more police to direct the new people coming in, and it never happens. There's always a crisis. How about a crisis for the people that are paying the bills? I respect what you're telling me, that some of your friends are telling you that. Respect what I'm saying. I have equally as many telling me completely different than that. I guess it depends what corner you come from.
So how do we meet in the middle? How do we, how do we, and I know, and I'm not crazy enough to realize, we can meet everybody's needs. But we need to come closer than we bet.
I think we did good last year.
Yeah, we did okay.
Yeah. But throwing the towel in now, now, if you're asking me to tell you the definite finites how to do that, I'll take a week off from my job to dig into it. That's what we have him for. And years past, I've been chastised about the dirty word, micromanaging. So, that's Dennis, that's what we paying the money for.
Understood. But what, I guess my question is still out there is, what of all of this do we not do, in order to keep the budget balanced?
We'll have to prioritize it. Is raises? Is there, I don't know. It could be a whole litany of things.
And I guess that's, that's the point of my bringing this up tonight, is we're in the early on in this process, is what general direction do you as a council want me to go in towards? I talked with Mark, councillor gone, excuse me. He's the chair of the capital committee, and recognizing that these capital expenses are the biggest change in the budget. And he would like to set up a meeting and go through these with a little bit finer-tooth comb, and at least see where, which of these we can maybe pull out, or defer, or how we want to handle that. Of course, looking long-term, one of the issues that I see is, the more we continue to defer, is it that we're deferring it because we don't have the funding for it, or is it we're deferring it because we think we can handle it in the future? And we know on the horizon, again, what you're looking at on the horizon is that this is just going to continue to get steep, and we're going to have to make some serious changes, depending on the direction of the council.
I would suggest getting the capital improvement committee very soon, give a mark before the next meeting, and come back with a recommendation. Or, you know, just to go through this again, that's the point of the committee. And there's enough time to even have two more meetings if necessary, because we have till March 15th, correct? Should we get one on the 22nd, and we'll have one, worst part of March? Any other questions, or Joan?
I just have a comment too. I don't think that it's good management to keep kicking the can down the road when it comes to the repairs. And whether it's the roads, the buildings, we know that there's money that has to be put into the buildings. Things age out, and you have to keep it up. And if you don't have the money in the reserves to pay for what you need to repair this year, and it just gets worse next year, and the year after. And I'm going to say it, as one of seven, I did not agree, I think I was the only one that didn't agree last year, that we should have cut the taxes by a mill. I thought that was too aggressive, and I think we're going to pay for it now. And I think we're going to have to probably take that mill rate back that we cut last year in order to take care of some of these things.
Doug, council?
Well, this problem just didn't drop this year, and it didn't drop last year. So some of us that's in this room has been on this council for past years, and the old picking of the can has taken place. There wasn't much, at least that I can recall, much argument about it. Here we sit, now it's a crisis. Now, all of a sudden, we've got to sell our children to meet this budget? No, I disagree. I'm not saying anything goes, but we got to put our heads together and come up with a plan. The buildings need their maintenance. Number one, the taxpayers' assets need to be taken care of. Why I'm sitting here in 2021 harping this, when councils prior knew that we had these assets? Nobody's watching. Whatever the reason was, here we are. And in the real world, a business has to make sure the roof is dry, the heater works, the toilets work, there's paper on the rolls, prior to handing out raises. These, this, the building is offered, it's a place for them to earn their living, and it's got to be up to snuff, number one for them. Number two, the taxpayers' assets that they've invested in over the years. Just kind of how I look at it.
Any other questions? Insight on this? Well, hopefully we can get a capital improvement meeting prior to the next meeting.
When is he, is he due back for the next meeting, Dennis? I believe so.
Yes, Mark?
I agree, we should have it as quick as possible.
As quick as possible. Dennis, you could reach out to Mark, or any of you. And if not, let me know, because we need, this is kind of time-sensitive here, if we're going to do this. Okay. Okay, that gets rid of, 8D, discussion regarding city council priorities for 2021. I'm just going to say one thing though, because I think we went through it last year, but I'm not sure. On here, you said councillor's top priority was like five points. And the sheet that I had turned in said, put one as your highest priority, and then go to five.
Right. Everybody, their top priority was number one.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. I don't have to worry about that though.
A councillor's top project, in each category is entered by a score of five points.
Yeah, that's what I saw that with the sheet.
Dennis? That was a, sorry, that was a carryover from last year. But no, everybody understood.
We're not going to have the conversation again.
No, no. Everybody, their top project was number one. And that's how, that's how it went into the spreadsheet. That's how, that's how it appears here. So, in your council packet, you'll see a breakdown. And I want to, again, highlight that, this is not intended to force you to do these things this year. This is simply an exercise of, these are things that have been talked about, and for discussion. And if, and just to highlight for you, where each of you feel these are as far as a priority. But certainly, if you look at these numbers and you say, you know what, yeah, that's great, but we think we want to raise these ones, or whatever, you have that prerogative as a councillor. And so, from the public safety standpoint, they, looks like all seven of you identified that opioid and drug enforcement is a major issue that you want to have addressed. And out of a score of 100, this was one of the top scorer-getters, at a score of 71.5. And then you had the police station design and referendum, where you had six of you voting for that, score of almost 66. Still looking at the ambulatory service contracts, all six of you voted for that one. And also, trying to wrap up the fire station operational upgrades, all six of you voted for that. And so, those kind of round out the major ones where we could say that there's, and then community outreach was, where you had another four of you voted for that. And then, the color scale, the ones are all white, and you can see it, the gradation goes down from there. If a councillor did not vote for a box, it's in black. And that same kind of color scheme carries through the rest of the spreadsheet. The, as far as the infrastructure goes, the top vote getter, as far as the number of councillors that voted for it, was the streetlight program. That was not the highest priority one, which was the capital vehicle and equipment planning, at 51 points. And then, continuing work on the river road, and also looking at the sidewalk and pedestrian safety in the community. Those round out the... Those round out the, where there's a majority of the council that looked at those. The Leisure Services, the priorities there. The top one, no surprise, was getting the Teague Park Splashpad and Improvements finished up this year. Had six of you voted for that, at a score of 80 out of 100. And then there were library programs, Thursdays on Sweden Street, and the Library Business Resource Center. We recognize that as far as the Thursdays on Sweden, while we love Thursdays on Sweden, we didn't get to do them last year. We anticipate if we do them this year, it may be later on in the season after additional pandemic regulations are lifted. I, I think, as I've talked with Christina, some of the concern here is the, really the community engagement element. The, the getting the community together to, to respond where they can to each other, and the social wise. And there may need to be some other things that we look at in order to make that happen. We may not be able to do the large mass gathering Thursdays on Sweden event, but certainly we've, the indication is we can pull those off with a little, with not as much effort, because the things are readily in place. It's just a matter of, you know, getting the vendors called, and Christina says bands are readily available. So it's not a hard event to pull off when the time comes that we can. But certainly we want to look at public engagement overall, and how we can bring the community closer together. From Administration Priorities, it was, the Union Contract Negotiations was the highest point getter, but not one that, you actually had six councillors vote for the non-union compensation policy, and then five council members voting for the Union Contract Negotiations. For said, the Mobile Home Park Closure was a major priority this year. And I know that the Mobile Home Park Committee is, is meeting tomorrow afternoon to, to talk about that, and next steps that way. Also, dealing with tax-acquired property strategies. As I mentioned earlier tonight, I've already talked with legal counsel about maybe getting some additional language into that policy so that we can utilize some other methods of disposing of those properties that can help incentivize development of those grounds. So we'll certainly keep working on that. I skipped over, sorry, the, creating a, or working on the Performance Evaluation System. You had four of the seven councillors voting for that, but it was not a real high priority. Except for one councillor that, that was their number one priority, councillor error. Under, on an economic development standpoint, six of the seven councillors felt that small business expansion and retention was a priority. And again, fairly high vote getter overall, at 63 points. The Bird's Eye Site Cleanup and Master Planning, Downtown Revitalization, Land Bank Creation, Neighborhood Redevelopment. They all got similar scores as far as overall priority. You'll see that the economic development, there was, there's quite a few little projects below that majority line. And so, there's definitely a lot of different strategies, a lot of different paths that we can go with economic development. And as I said before, this is not to say that we're only going to focus on the top ones throughout the year. We are going to be engaging in other elements as they come. In fact, I need to also relate, as I missed it from my manager's report, that the Facade Improvement Grant Program that the city has, that has been advertised, we've put it on social media, it will be in the newspaper. Well, we've made information available here in City Hall, and if businesses... It says in the downtown area, that's a little bit of a misnomer, in that the downtown area for Caribou is pretty much all of our commercial districts. There's just a very few commercial properties that would not be able to be considered in the downtown. So if you're a business in town, come contact us, and we'll see what we can do to, to help you out with the Facade Improvement Program.
We changed, we changed that around last year, so that's the one, that's the one-time window to do it, so we don't have to chase the applications, correct?
Right, right.
It's that time of year to start that process.
Get in touch with us as soon as you can. The applications are, are due in, in March, the end of March. I'm sorry, not the end of March, March 15th. From a community development priority, blight removal, this was the highest point getter overall on the projects, at 83 points out of 100. And we had six of the councillors say that was a priority. Other items that rose, weekly business visits, or coffee with, we've talked about coffee with the councillor, or coffee with the manager. Just trying to make sure that we're engaging with the businesses, finding out what their concerns are, and trying to, again, engage them, and also try to build up the unity and communication of businesses in town. The Land Use Survey of the Community, this is a big one, because it, it also helps us identify potential properties for development, and, and the future desired development in the, in the town, which leads into the General Plan Update and the Zoning Regulation Rewrite. So, those are kind of the, the major, the major projects.
Remind him to go turn his mic off, just real quick. I can see that happening. Sorry, Dennis.
Five minutes.
Master switch is on.
Oh.
This is a nice pen.
Back to the meeting. Were we done discussing council, city council priorities? Or, I didn't, maybe you were, but I don't know if anybody...
Yeah, I made it to the end of the spreadsheet, but it really is up for you as councillors to discuss.
Do we have anything going on?
Well, I, I look at a lot of these, and a lot of these have been, are an ongoing thing. Like Thursdays on Sweden, the reason why I put a five there is because it's working. It's a phenomenal thing. The Rec Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, everybody does a great job at Thursdays on Sweden. And for us as a council, unless something absolutely horrendous goes on down there, I don't think we need to waste time talking about it. It's, it's, it's a great thing that everybody's doing. And it lends to community outreach. You cannot have an opioid and drug enforcement program without community outreach. Hence, that's what Thursdays on Sweden's does. So, for me to kind of put a number to it, it seemed like, well, it's working. It's a great thing for this community, and I think we need more things like that for this community. But the big thing with the opioid and the drug enforcement, you have to have community outreach. You have to have, we have the DARE program. We need more things like that. The minute that children in this community are not engaged on how to stay off drugs, what to do with their life besides drugs or alcohol, or anything, then that's when they get lost. There are plenty of wonderful things to do in Cary Wmaine, and the surrounding communities, and in Erstic County, besides this evil that has encompassed not only us, but every single small town and big town in this country. I, I would like to see, if we're going to do the opioid and, and drug enforcement, we need community outreach, and they go hand in hand. But that's a, that's a big thing for me. We, we've got a, and I think by having the Splashpad, by having all the programs at the Rec, with what Officer Cochrane is doing with the, oh, the Citizens Academy, I think it is? That program? That's all wonderful stuff, and we need to really look at that. Even what Hope's doing down at the library. And it comes, really, this whole thing is an entire citywide, department-wide, even Public Works, believe it or not, you know? Somebody hits a pothole, and that's all it takes for them to trigger, to go use again. Breaks a car or something. I mean, it takes so little when you're in recovery to trigger you. And that's why good community outreach, the sober houses, everything else.
Anything else on that? Does anybody else want to, Lou?
I'm going to jump off on what Tom just said. I think something to remember, and I agree about the opioid-drug piece. But as in anything in our community, there are, there are levels of education maturity. So, the Splashpad, the Rec Programs, all of those things are geared toward our elementary kids. They're geared to little, granted, you're going to get middle schoolers in the Splashpad for a while, you know, just because. But we really don't have a lot in place that engages our middle, middle schoolers. If you're not in sports, which is a wonderful piece, there's really nothing for you. There's, there are no places around town. You can go to the Rec, work in the weight room, but you're hanging, you're hanging out. And that's, again, where some of the issues start. So, it wasn't in here, but maybe that's something that we need to kind of, and not this year, but start thinking about, what are some things we can put into place that will engage that middle school level, because that's where the drug piece starts? And then it just escalates in high school.
Well, and the Rec does have programs like the Take It Outside Series, going fishing, going hiking, going kayaking, things like that. But it's not a little piece.
No, it's limited though.
It's not limited. I mean, anybody can go out fishing and everything else, but we need more of those programs, stuff like that. I mean, there's, there's a lot that, and, and I think we need to start working with the schools and figuring out, because it's, a lot of people see the town and the school as two separate entities, but on this, we all have to come together. What are, what are they doing at the high school level? Well, you have the tech center to go work on stuff. You're right, Lou, we need to, we need to have more engaging programs. And I think it would be, it would behoove us all to have Dennis reach out to the schools and say, okay, what are you doing? You know, I'm, I'm sure the Police Department talks with the high schools and everybody else. I know that's happening. We have a resource officer there. So to be able to say, okay, what else can we do? And that's where the Rec, their expertise, and different programs and stuff. And, because you have kids from all walks of life, kids that like to read books, kids that like to go outside, all that stuff. I, I would just like to see, because I hear a lot that not enough's being done.
Yeah, I just want to mention, along with both of you, and that's why I prioritize the Collins Pond Dam and Trail system a little bit, because there are actually some really great ideas that are kind of being put into place there. And I think a lot of that would target the older kids in our community that don't play sports and would like to be outside. So that was one of the reasons that I prioritized that one the way I did.
I just, I'll throw this out, it's not on the list, but there are some communities that will have a youth city council. that will have a youth city council, in which they get together, you have people from different age groups that come in, and you talk about, hey, as a city, what can we do to help you out, to help your class or your age group? What are some things? And, and they act as a sounding board from their peers, and they bring ideas to the council and, and get engaged that way. Of course, there are certain youth that would, they might jump at that, and they're engaged enough, and they'd be willing, you know, energetic, and it might be the same group that's already in class presidency or something like that, but there are certain groups that you could pull in and say, okay, give us some, give us some feedback. And that's something that we could, I could talk with the superintendent about and the principals about, and see, even if it's just a one- or two-time thing, you know, lunch with the manager type of a thing, or lunch with a counselor, and we could set some of those up.
Kind of why I prioritize the small business expansion and retention. We don't talk about bringing in, hopefully, you know, we have these big businesses that come in, we always talk about, but if you, if you don't keep what you have, so you're just trading bait, so you're bringing this big store here, and you lose two here, what have you gained? And that goes along a lot with that, as you said, the, you know, the coffee with the, with the counselor, or the, or the city manager, all those things, all go together, even with the, you know, the debriefification committee, all that stuff just kind of works together when you're dealing with small business. So, that, that's why I prioritize those. And the rest are pretty straightforward. Anybody else have anything you wanna say about what to prioritize there? Okay, next item. Thank you, everybody for getting those in. Acceptance of donations to the Nine Islander Museum on page seventeen. Dennis?
Counselors, we, the Nine Islander Museum received some gifts, and under state statute, the city council has to accept gifts that are given to the city. And so, they, the two gifts that were presented, one is a, a large rock collection from Earl and Ethel Langley, and the other is from Carol Welfington and Susie Plord, who donated their mother's fur stoles. And the, the Nine Islander Board would like to have the council accept these into the collection and be able to put them out on display, utilize them in some traveling trunks. Currently, the, the stoles are, what they anticipate doing is putting them behind glass and protecting them for the time. They still want to have somebody come in and identify the, the type of animal that the furs are, so they can add some more educational element to that, and to those donations. But, again, by state code, the council has to accept or reject the gifts, and the Nine Islander Board would like the council to accept these, please.
Make a motion that we accept the two donations from Earl and Ethel Langley and Carol Welfington and Susie Plord.
Second.
Yeah, three seconds.
Air, second by Terry O. Any discussion?
Are they going to have the story behind the sholes? Do, do they have a, like a history that, that you can read about who had and what was the air, you know, the time period? What was, you know, that to me would be interesting, to understand what life was, help describe what life was then, and what those sholes meant to that individual or individuals.
Pass it along to Joan for maybe a question at the next meeting.
Yep.
In the form of an email, any other discussion? Air?
Aye.
Boma?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Terry O?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Unanimous. Nine B Cooperative Agreement with the City of Belfast for FAA capital funding. Dennis, please.
As we continue discussion about the airport tonight, this item is a little background. Because of the number of planes that we have at the airport, the city receives $150,000 each year that we can put toward capital improvement projects or purchases of large equipment. The, the capital improvements at the airport are part of a plan that the FAA has to approve. And currently, we don't have any capital expenditures planned for 21 or 22 at the airport, and as such, our $150,000 would essentially be banked by the FAA. They don't give that money to us, and it hits our books every year, they hold on to it. And we only get it when we paid somebody out, and then they reimburse us. But, from time to time, other airports might have a major project that comes up that they need money for, and you can either use FAA money, or you can use your own money, or a combination of both. When we built the Six Bay Tea Hangers at the airport back in 2018, we reached out to Dexter and Old Town and asked if we could use some of their allotment, that they weren't using those years to help fund our project, and then we paid them back over subsequent years with our allotments. Well, we've been approached by the airport, the, the city of Belfast, they have a major apron repair project that they need to get done, and they've asked if they could, in a sense, borrow the city's allocation this year, and that they would pay it back before 2023, which is when our next major capital project is planned. So, on your agenda tonight is a cooperative agreement with the city of Belfast, so let them use our $150,000 this year, they'll pay it back in the 2023, 24 federal fiscal year.
Which is our next project.
Which is our next project.
Which is the apron.
Right. Our, we have to redo our major apron project around the hangers.
So, potentially, we could have 300,000, because we're gonna get 150,000 that year. We're gonna get Belfast's 150,000, right?
Yes.
So, we can go back to item 8C about the budget, and down where it says 232,000 towards future capital reserves, the airport apron. So, there's a good hunk of change right there. So, we technically wouldn't be a negative 554,772.
Except we can't, we can't allocate any of these funds to other capital projects.
No, but we can do the apron, knowing that, knowing that we're putting money in reserves for the apron, when we can save that money on different projects besides the apron, 'cause it seems like if we do this with Belfast, we're gonna have, have enough money for the apron, right?
It will be close. It's estimated the apron project's gonna cost us over $600,000.
And so, you have next year's, 2022, 23, and 24.
Right. So, if we, if we were banking all of our funds, we'd have $450,000. The state usually kicks in a good portion of that money, and then the city has a smaller portion, like 5% of the total cost. So, in the capital fund, coming back to that budget discussion, right now, we have $30,000 being put toward future apron repairs this year, next year, and in 23, which would be the city's, roughly our portion of that total project cost. But we, we can't budget these funds into our operations or our capital. Again, we don't see these funds until we actually build something and have expenses.
So, it's safe to say that we wouldn't have to put 300, or $30,000 in reserve this year?
Right. That's one of the things that we'll look at from the capital committee side, right.
So, make a motion that we move to authorize the city manager to sign the cooperative agreement with the city of Belfast to transfer 2021 FAA entitlement funds.
Second.
Doug? Second by Air. Discussion? Air?
Aye.
Boma?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Terry O?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Next. Reports and discussion by mayor and council members. 10A, discussion regarding city councilor's attendance at meetings. Dennis?
Mayor, the, this was a point of discussion that you asked to have on the agenda, so that you as councilors could discuss the, the attendance practice at meetings, and our attorney, Rick Solomon, is, is waiting for us to give him a call, so that he can be here for the discussion, and you can ask him questions if you have any. So, if it's okay, I'll dial him in, and you can start there.
Absolutely. I guess this is gonna be, this is a discussion only for this topic.
Hello?
Hello, Rick, it's Dennis in, in the city council. Can you hear us okay?
Good evening.
I can hear him. Can everybody else hear?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Good evening.
What was that?
Said, "Good evening."
Good evening. Okay, yeah. We've got a new microphone system, so hopefully it's gonna be better.
So, Mayor, I guess the, the questions have been asked, have been fielded a little bit from the public, and amongst the councilors, to me, is particularly about the requirement that the councilors attend all of the meetings, and particularly the executive sessions when they're called. And I believe it's pointed directly at Councilor Morrell, and his past couple of meetings, where he's, he's left the meeting when executive sessions are called, and what, what should be the practice, and how does, how do things tie into with regards to the charter and the state statute, as far as requirements go? I will, I will say that I, I did reach out to MMA, again, it's free legal counsel, and that's why we utilize them. They indicated that there's nothing in state statute that requires a city councilor or an elected official to attend meetings, and they defer entirely to a local charter. In our case, the local charter does not mandate attendance either, but it does have the provision in there that if, if councilors have, have unexcused, subsequent, or sequential unexcused absences, that it's potential grounds for forfeiture of a position. And so, there was some question as far as, does walking out of a meeting constitute an unexcused absence, or how does it apply when, when a councilor's attended all the rest of the meeting? How does that work as a council, as far as you, and your own feelings as a council? As I mentioned, we have a legal counsel, Rick Solomon, on the line. Rick Onoff, you've looked into it very much, if you've got any thoughts or, at this point?
Well, I'm having a hard time hearing, Dennis, even though you have a new system. I mean, I, I, can you hear me all right on your end?
Yes.
So, I mean, I do not have a chance to do any extensive research. I do concur that there is no state statute that would provide for forfeiture of office for not attending executive sessions. Any such matter in name would be a matter of the, the individual charter of the municipality under home rule. That would be something that the legislature would defer, at least at this point, that deferred to local communities. So, you'd have to look at the charter to determine whether that is something that would require, what is required, and, and what is the consequence of not attending. There are, you know, certainly the provision for executive, executive sessions is statutory, and of course, everybody on the council knows, it covers personnel matters, contract negotiations, confidential attorney communications. And there are sensitive matters that simply should be discussed in private, and not before the public, and then the decision, of course, is made in public session. And it's, I think, generally accepted that when you are elected to office, you're expected to do your job, and that includes, you know, attendance to your duties as a councilor, and part of that does involve executive sessions when there are matters that need to be in executive session. And it doesn't happen every meeting, but there are usually every year situations where personnel, personnel, personnel matters are involved, or, or again, contract negotiations or similar things. With that being said, you have to look at the charter provision, and, you know, I'd have to, you know, do a little formal research to see if something similar to this has come up in some other community, but the charter does not specifically talk about forfeiture or not attending executive sessions, that's clear. One would have to do an interpretation of the language to arrive at that conclusion. So, I would, if the council wants me to, to, you know, research that, I, I would try to find some similar cases in some other situation, but I'm not sure that such, such something exists, but it might in some other circumstance, some other city, some other state even.
Doug, Doug is gonna pipe in here.
Hi, Rick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Rick, help me, help me understand liability in an executive session, when, when there's, when there's a leaker in the, in executive session, and let's pretend that was to a third party that suffered damages in some form or fashion, would the council, in its entirety in that meeting, be held liable for that? Would, in other words?
I'd have to look at it, but I do not believe the council would have legal liability for discussions during an executive session that was illegally leaked.
Right, it's not so-
But I certainly could look into it.
Yeah. For me, it's not so much what's discussed, it's about what's leaked. And, and just theorize that it's a business, and it's some widget or something that, you know, gets leaked out of there and destroys this potential business's revenue projections, I mean, look at it 100 different ways. If I understand Dennis correct, we don't have a liability policy on the council? Individual councilors?
I think you have statutory immunity as councilors to do your job, and, you know, the, the limited purposes for executive session, I can't imagine would involve discussions. Well, it could, I mean, you don't know what would come up, but generally, you have to look at the list, you know, it's, you know, discussions of, again, consultations with your lawyer, labor, labor contracts, and, you know, personnel matters internally with the city employees, those are the types of matters that would be matters of, of executive session. You know, I don't know, I, yeah, obviously, there's, it's hard to say what could be discussed, but the statute is very specific on the things that should be discussed and are properly discussed within executive session. But I don't think the councilor, the council or members of the council would be legally liable under state law for discussions that were held in executive session regarding the matters that affect city business.
Thank you.
Rick, I, maybe I can try to clarify. If, if we're in an economic development discussion with a developer, a business owner that says, hey, I wanna come to your town, I've got this great new fantastic idea, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the reins that grow along the Erstic River, and I'm gonna make these amazing baskets that last 100 years, and that gets discussed in executive session as far as what the city can do to help that business out and make things work, and what kind of incentives we might entice them with, or help make it all work, and then the next day, we find out that even though we should have kept everything quiet, somebody that was in the session spilled the beans, and now there's another business coming to town that's got the same idea.
Or stole his idea.
Or, or stole his idea. Is, if that leaks occurs, I guess, you know, first and foremost, there'd have to be an idea of, did it actually come from one of the councilors in the meeting, but even then, is the city council potentially viable for damages to that business for that, for that information, or that potential damage that, that was caused to that business owner?
Well, I, I, you know, I, I'll certainly look at it, and that, that gives me an example of a concrete. I suppose somebody could- I suppose somebody could, let's say, to take your hypothetical, somebody was going to develop along the Lusick River and that came out well, somebody could, the next day, immediately start buying land on the river, you know, I suppose to anticipate some development to try to take advantage of the information. I can look at it. I, like I said, I, you know, I don't know if there would be confidentiality agreement between having contractual liability, depending on what the negotiations were. Typically, in many instances, when there's new, something new going on, certainly with private businesses, there are confidentiality agreements that do have damage provisions and injunctive relief provisions. I'm not sure if that's the standard practice when somebody comes to municipality looking to do a development in the city. And certainly, you'd want those things to remain confidential. But as far as the city's liability, I actually would have to look to see if that, if there's an immunity for that sort of thing or not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council regarding this? Lou?
I just have a concern because councillor Morrell made a decision based on a leak or a thought, you know, something that was thought to be leaked. And my question is, is if councillor Morrell chooses to leave the meeting prior to an executive session, is it then, and I don't know what the word, I guess I'm going to use "legal," for anyone in that executive session to then share what occurred with councillor Morrell without it being a leak? Because supposedly, what's said in the room stays in the room. And if someone shares with councillor Morrell after the fact outside the room, then wouldn't that be considered a leak? Just a question.
Well, I can say, if you're asking me in general, I would say if somebody is recused or whatever from an executive session, then they should not participate in the discussion or that executive session is meant to be for the time of that meeting. That's why there's no notes kept and no recordings made. And the person that's recused themselves, for example, because of a conflict or whatever, should not really be privy to those discussions. That would be my preliminary thinking and would not certainly participate in any vote on the matter, not having participated in the executive session meeting.
So what...
Go ahead.
Who's, who's, go ahead, Doug.
I couldn't agree more with you. I think that's prudent business. Nobody should talk to me. I don't need to know. All I need to know is that until this is settled is when it comes on an agenda item, it should be flagged. So I understand that that was an executive session material. I hold it against nobody to sit back and stay out of it. I don't expect anybody to talk to me. I don't want to know. If I wanted to know, I'd stay, I'd put myself at risk, everything I have at risk. Now, this is just my opinion, to sit in a city council meeting where somebody's got loose jaws and they're talking. I don't have that want to risk what I have because of that. Therefore, I don't need to know what's going on in that executive session. As long as I know right here they're flagged, I have no intentions on voting on them, staying out of it.
That was a question I was going to ask. I would just use an example, an easy example here of that would be union negotiations. So when we go to vote on a contract, would that be something that would primarily discussed in executive session? So that would be an example of where you wouldn't be part of that vote?
I don't know.
That's just a question?
Because I have my personal opinion about the contract, whether I sit in with them or not. I've been around here and I can know. Was I privy to what the banner back and forth was in these so-called negotiations? No. Would it have changed my opinion? They haven't yet, but okay, maybe.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Lou, were you?
I'm good.
Joan?
Yeah, no.
I guess all I'm taking away from this is currently, as Rick is indicating, that it doesn't indicate anywhere in the charter that leaving, not attending executive session is grounds for forfeiture as I'm looking at the charter here, correct? Rick?
Yes. There's nothing specifically that refers to that. Attendance at regular meetings, three consecutive meetings, or the issue that had been addressed earlier in the year, about 80% of different committees. And it's three consecutive regular meetings. And I don't know, you know, if you have executive sessions even every single meeting. I suspect you probably don't, but maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
It depends. We don't know. You know, it depends on what's up. Go ahead, Doug.
I'd go on the record to say that, Rick, if you come back with something from the state that says, or law that says that my 30 years of business and my assets are not liable, I have no problem sitting back in. Or if you come back and say, "No, the state says you got to this," fair enough, I'll sit back in. But I'm not going to knowingly expose my family and my assets I've worked 30 years for for somebody that can't keep their mouth shut in an executive session. It's sad and it's embarrassing. But if that's the way it goes, so be it. Hey, we move on.
Rick, is that something that you would, as you mentioned before, you would, earlier regarding the finding out, which there may not be anything out there regarding whether there was a similar situation, somebody not attending executive sessions, or maybe this is a unique thing? Is that something you can look into as you mentioned earlier?
Yes. I think it sounds like from the discussion, there's two issues that the council would like some clarification on. One, is our council members liable for disclosures made in executive session? And that's number one. And number two, is there any, you know, is there any other precedent for this issue of failure to attend an executive session? And I think I can do some digging on that. And then the third, I think, related issue is if somebody, again, does not participate in executive session for whatever reason, be it a conflict of interest or some other reason, are they allowed to engage in a discussion after executive session is ended about the content of that executive session? I think that's probably a given that you don't, because that's the nature of executive sessions. You're not supposed to be repeating the information that was discussed with anybody. And I would think that would include a councillor that's recused, him or herself. But I can look at that as well to confirm that that is, that is correct.
Is that a, is that a consensus among the council as far as what I'm asking, Rick, or to look into?
Yes.
I mean, this, okay. Everybody's good with this? I don't need to vote on this or anything, so. Do I?
No.
No.
Can I?
Yeah, go right ahead, please. Yeah.
Rick, while we've got you on the phone and we're talking about attendance at meetings, during the last city council meeting, we had councillor Gawn attending via Zoom. And the question was raised, if we go into executive sessions, is it appropriate or not to have somebody on Zoom attend those meetings? Or would it be best that executive sessions not take place with somebody through Zoom feeds?
I have to look on that. I cannot remember if that was addressed in one of the governor's emergency orders. I know that issue has come up. I've read something about that. The concern, of course, is that you don't know who is in the room with the Zoom person. You know, you could be at a computer at your kitchen table with 10 people and nobody will know. And so I cannot remember if the governor addressed executive sessions on Zoom or if that's been addressed by any municipal. So I think I could find the answer to that pretty quickly because I've read something about that recently.
So that'll be number four on the list you'd look into?
I bring that up because the, under the governor's state of emergency with the pandemic, that's, that state of emergency is what allows us to do Zoom meetings. But that is an expiring provision of the emergency regulations. As soon as we're out of the emergency status, that goes away. So even the governor and the legislature recognizes there are some limitations to what Zoom can be used for in public settings.
That brings, that's another really good question, I guess. Thank you for bringing that up. I would overlook that. So we have our list of stuff for Rick to look into. Does anybody else have any more discussion on this topic? As far as I see, we've...
So I just did a quick search on Google. The city of Bath has something on executive sessions pertaining to this. To ensure privacy during executive session, we will observe the following procedures. A separate private Zoom meeting for executive session will be created. Once a motion to move the executive session is approved, in public Zoom meeting, participants in executive session will exit the public meeting. Staying in the Zoom app, participants in executive sessions will then join the private meeting created for executive session. Executive session is done securely in private. Once executive session is complete, participants will leave the private Zoom meeting and rejoin the public meeting using their panelist join link for any potential report from executive session adjournment in front of the public. However, that, I think, just the line, "Executive session is done securely in private," if someone was ever found to be in the room higher than the occupancy of that person, then yeah, that person probably would be penalized or could face repercussions by the city. But I can guarantee there's nothing because you just don't know. And there's no way to prove it unless, you know, you have binoculars and you're spying. Well, that, that gets into some more legalities. So, I mean, I think at this point, I mean, this pandemic has made everybody have to change their, their way of thinking. And everybody's scrambling to make something work. I think once we start talking about this again, we ought to adopt our own rules. If Rick can't find something that says this is what's mandated by the governor in Augusta, then this is how we're going to have to do it. Because we don't have rules like Bath does. We just, we've kind, we haven't adopted any Zoom meeting rules.
Yeah, we got a charter and that's...
So, and maybe, maybe it's just a resolution for until this pandemic is over and Zoom, as long as the Zoom meetings persist under governor's rule, then you can do this. But after that, then you have to be in person for executive session, something like that, you know? I'll, I'll be interested to see what Rick comes up with.
Because prior to that, the only reason we're allowed to call in or to the Zoom is because of the pandemic, correct? Before that, that was...
Yeah, Jane yelled at me for calling in from Arizona.
The phone call wasn't acceptable. You had to be here in person for the meeting.
I think you could tune in, but you couldn't place a vote. You had to be here in person to place a vote.
No, she yelled at me for even calling in.
Who did?
Jane.
No. But I'm just using that as an example. He tried to call in, but there was some, but that's changed and that may change back at some point. We don't, we don't know. Maybe, maybe it'll just be a normal protocol. So that, that pretty well covers everything. Well, I do. What's going on?
Yeah. I think, yeah.
Boom, boom, boom. Thank you, Rick. And be in touch with Dennis, I'm sure, regarding these. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, very good. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, so that went well. Thank you. I'm going to continue on with reports and discussion by mayor and council members. Just because of this, I had mentioned a couple of meetings previous about having a charter committee and I was going to wait. The idea was wait until we got done with the capital improvement, but I probably at the next meeting or so, I'm going to have a charter, committee of three people. Please pass to me or Dennis, your interest and maybe why too, because maybe everybody wants to do it, but it'll be a three-person charter to look at some of these, some of these small things in there. You know, who excuses who and...
Little house maintenance there.
Little, little house maintenance. That's what I have to say. Did you have anything?
Well, we met at the airport and I think the consensus was, minus what we talked about tonight, but just to look at what it would be to, if we're going to have an airport, let's have an airport. And if we're not, then let's not. But look at, you know, to get lifelike to land and what the brushes would cost and the certain chemicals we'd have to put on to the runway. And just, just kind of get a, kind of a general idea of how much this stuff's going to cost and, and if we move forward with it. As far as planning board goes, there's a meeting this Thursday at 5:30 via Zoom. Imagine you can catch it on YouTube for that. And a few businesses coming, site design review process, more land bank legislation, notice of violations, stuff like that. And my favorite, Chapter 13 revision process for city council, which Dennis has assured me last year that it would be done by this year, but I'll give him a little leeway. So it should be done by the end of the month though, right?
We'll have, we'll have some major items brought to them for public hearing.
How close are we to wrapping the whole thing up?
It's still several months out. I've been trying to get the planning board just to sit down and go through the land use table and figure that out. And now they're talking about adding another zone to everything as part of the rewrite. And so that's going to take some time to push that out as well.
The biggest thing with Chapter 13, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, it is a vessel for bringing in new business. You lack regulation because this Chapter 13 was put out when Loring was here, when we, when we could say, okay, we want this to be in this side of town, this to be here, this to be here. At this point, with the population we're at and with limited business here, we need to put our foot on the gas pedal. And this is a huge thing. Delaying this any further is no bueno. Just, we got to get this done. And we ought to by June anyway, don't you think? Couple of months, you're into June.
Well, if we can get this budget out of the way, that's my, that's my top priority.
Dennis, you can multitask, can't you?
I will.
Go.
That's part of it as well as everything else, but yes.
Okay.
Those are my, those are my two big priorities.
I got to apologize to the buildings committee. I called a meeting and forgot about it. I got tied up on a big bid process we've been on for over a month now and it's no excuse, won't happen again, but that's the reason I forgot about it. So I'm formally excusing myself. How's that?
There you go. So maybe you have another one.
Yeah, yeah, there'd be plenty.
Lou, go ahead.
I attended the library board meeting last Tuesday. They have them the first Tuesdays of every month. They were thrilled to have a council member there. They said it hadn't been for quite a while. What a great group of, in this case, ladies. Very organized, very well-run meeting. They knew what they were there for. They got things done. They had great discussions. And they've got all these projects lined up. So if you haven't been to the library lately, you may want to go, especially with the kids. They've got raffles going on through the month of February, baskets and boxes. They've got something they call mystery boxes. And they're looking to do something every month where they can buy raffle tickets and/or, you know, to raise money. I think they just finished their silent auction. So just a really neat group and really excited to see what they pull out of their hat next, but seem to be doing well.
That was a liaison we did have. You indicated there hasn't been anybody for quite some time, but I remember.
Yeah. So that, yeah, they were excited and, you know, everyone welcomed. We did it Zoom, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Joan, did you have anything you wanted on the council?
No, we, I, I did the report for the Nylander last time and we'll have a meeting next Thursday night, so.
No, we have our mobile park trailer, trailer park closure committee meeting tomorrow. And so other than that, I have nothing to report.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody else have anything they want to throw in here on this?
Come sled Caribbean. Finally have snow. People can go sledding.
Yeah.
And skiing.
And skiing. We went over the weekend and the mountains snapped right around like that. It's crazy.
So, item 11, executive session... So, item 11, executive sessions, A, I don't believe we have to, still need that one on there?
I think I can just report this in open meetings, since it's been an open discussion quite a bit, but with regards to the Chomka property, we, we do have the, the surveyor that, or the engineering firm that did all the survey work around that property prior. They've indicated that they will, they can come up after the thaw and be able to do the survey work for that property. But until that time, I've informed Mrs. Chomka that there will be no further discussion until we have the survey work done.
So that update on that, so now.
T D.
So 11B, we need a motion.
Two of them.
Second.
To go into executive session for litigation matters under 4056E. Move second in. Air.
Aye.
Boma.
Aye.
Ariel.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Snap. Motion carries. So let's turn our microphones off.